...is on there.
Twenty-four.
Forty-seven point five eight.
Yeah.
Four point four oh four seven five eight three or just five eight?
Five eight two.
Five eight two, okay. So, the value of that property in the one acre is only thirty. If they're saying the true cash value is thirty-nine, your property taxes are seven thirteen. But that's just for the one acre. If you go out the whole property, that's where the higher amount comes.
So that's justification to pay the surveyor to split it off and save one more tax?
Yes.
And how much you think a survey would cost?
Thousand bucks.
Five hundred, do a thousand?
Close to that, yeah.
But you're gonna save that tax as the first year?
Right.
Yes.
All right, well, it sounds like... Because if we leave it, if we said, okay, you can have two years, and we bump the rent to five hundred, and we don't cut off the property, then we're gonna be handing the rent to taxes.
Probably two thousand dollars to Virginia Township for additional property taxes. That makes it a no-brainer to go ahead and split it off, no matter what happens.
No matter what you do, you split it. What you want to do with that second, with those two acres, we can determine that on time.
Once they're no longer income property, then we won't pay tax on it, is that correct?
Correct. They will not be taxed, because this municipality owns it, we're not using it for any purpose, so it won't be taxed.
I think that splitting it either way is the only thing we could agree on. So, I'll entertain a motion then to at least split the property for now. Do we have to decide what we do with it, or can we just split?
I think you can table that part of what you want to do with it. Sounds to me like you're directing me to come back to you with a lease agreement for no more than twenty-four months, for the one acre.
I would like it to be at least twenty-four months, because I'm on for four years. I believe you're on for four years, so we'll be here at Shepherd at the end of two years. It won't be a mystery.
I'll be long gone.
And then, with that the rent increase, then, at the five hundred dollars a month, are we talking about?
My understanding is it would be five hundred the first, for July one, and then July one, twenty-twenty, it would go up twenty dollars. Way, I understand.
Correct. The lease is in place through three months from now.
Right.
At that point, the new rental rate would be five hundred or whatever.
Right, and then five twenty for the following year.
In the meantime, that lease is just gonna be for that one acre with the house on it.
Correct.
We'll still get it, split them up.
Yep, and then we can decide what we want to do with the other two acres later.
For right now, is that acceptable to everybody? Is the direction a starting point?
I'm looking for longer, but that's one vote, so.
Well, I would rather, I'm in your camp, but I would rather, rather than send him home again, not knowing where his future is, I would rather, if we can agree on at least two years, I think that would be, I mean, acceptable. He knows he's, they don't have to worry about getting tossed out or something.
Could you do one, two-year, with three, one-year lease options as we get closer to making a decision? It's only an option, now whether we accept it or not, but.
That would be, you could do that.
Something like that might be a little bit better, so he does know what that looks like, four or five years span?
But in two years, we're just gonna put him back in the same boat, then, every year. Because you only have one-year options, right? So then every twelve months, we're gonna put him through the same thing. You know what I mean? That would be my concern.
But I think what it gives us.
He'd never get that level.
But I think what it gives us, twenty-four months to get that, and whether we will accept the three one-years, and move it and make it successful.
A city option, you're saying?
Exactly, a city option, so that we could then give them a potential three years and maybe five-year total. But right now, it's two years, and that gives us time to think about what we really need to do to move forward. That's just mine, one vote.
So lease will come back to us to approve, right, before you get to offer to him anyway?
Yeah, right.
All right. Is everybody comfortable with a twenty-four-month at least starting point? Five hundred a year, or sorry, five hundred a month?
Starting July.
July one, twenty-twenty? Up to five hundred, or sorry, up to five twenty, July one, twenty-twenty? Split the property, that lease will be just for the one acre with the house on it, and we'll decide what to do with the other two acres. Is that a fair direction, if everybody on board with that now?
I can bring you something back.
Do you need a motion, or?
I think just a direction, I think consensus.
A little direction and consensus, because you are not approving the vote.
All right. That item is two for now. Our consentee is Redevelopment Ready Communities Resolution five twenty.
In order for the City of Lowell to be able to be a community eligible for investment by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, we must be engaged in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Initiative. If we wish to engage with RRC, we must do so within thirty days of our presentation we had at the last council meeting. I'm not convinced this program will bring us new investment or increase in taxable value. I'm concerned the bureaucracy is gonna be burdensome, and the ability to meet all the retirement requirements will be difficult. That said, I will attempt annually to complete a task or two to stay engaged. However, we have projects that we are currently working with MEDC on, or developers are currently working with MEDC on in order to get their assistance. While I recognize the best practices they propose are good ideas, I'm not convinced being enrolled in this program is gonna be anything game-changing for our community. That said, though, I would hate to hinder developers who need their assistance by not engaging in the program. A taxes resolution, zero-five dash twenty, which is needed to engage with the MEDC in this program. And I recommend Lowell City Council approved Resolution oh-five dash twenty to engage in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program.
I think a meeting or two meetings ago, when they were here, you brought that up, saying how we can just...
There are several.
Just to stay in the game.
Correct.
There are a couple relatively simple hoops.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that just keeps us.
Jump through one of those a year.
Right.
If it helps, maybe it gets busted up and gets better, and then five or ten years down the road, we're glad we stayed in.
Yeah, I anticipate there's gonna be changes to this program.
What was the annual cost for us to join this?
Nothing. Although there are, in my opinion, there are unfettered mandates that they do make us do, but that's...
Mike's time, where's the investment?
Well, there's some things, like an economic development strategy. In my opinion, they're gonna spend some money on that, but I don't know much about it at this time.
Cliff will do it for free, so.
Yeah. And this is just baby steps, right, just to stay in the game, so we're not necessary.
We're keeping bureaucrats employed.
You said that, I didn't say that.
I said it.
I'll then for a motion to approve resolution, what is it, five dash twenty?
I'll make that motion to approve Resolution number five, oh-five dash two-zero.
I'll support it.
Any other discussion, or I'm sure hilarious questions for Mike? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweidel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent, Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Uh, new business, I am a historical museum.
Hello, thank you for having me. Every year, the museum comes and gives you an update on our previous year to kind of keep you updated on what's happening at our local museums. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I've got a brief PowerPoint, some slides here to kind of walk you through what 2019 looked like for us. The main mission of the Lowell Area Historical Museum is to preserve and present Lowell Area's district. And just some numbers for you. We saw a nice increase in our attendance last year. We had thirty thousand, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-six people that came in direct contact with the museum through exhibits, programs, education events, that type of thing. And then our website saw a huge increase in users over the past year. We had thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and nine individual visits to our website. Both of those numbers are huge for an organization our size. To have served that many people with our resources is pretty incredible, so I'm pretty excited about that. Our volunteer hours also jumped last year. We had almost three thousand volunteer hours logged, and we know that we don't gather every hour that everyone puts into what we do. But we do have just an incredible team of volunteers doing so many different things at the museum. So a lot of what you're gonna see next is possible, because again, we have an extremely robust education program. We see first through fourth graders for a number of programs. Some of them happen at the museum. Some of them happen in partnerships that we do in the community. We do a number of third-grade programs out at Heidi's Farm Stand in the fall. And then we do a number of programs at the Wittenbach Center for second grade and fourth graders. So we make use of some of their outdoor spaces, talk about local syrup, talk about pioneer life, Michigan history, that kind of thing out there. And then, we also go into the classrooms. And so in second grade, we go into each second grade classroom and talk about early pioneer settlement and Lowell integration to the area, and do a lot of hands-on activities with them right in the class. Last year, we expanded our museum immersion program. You may remember this from past presentations. We started a pilot program five years ago with Murray Lake Elementary, where we brought the kids into the museum for two full days, and they use the museum as their classroom. They get to use resources that we don't typically get to get out and use with the students. They get to do things like, on the first day, pick an artifact that they want to learn more about in the museum. And then we spend all day putting research packets together for them. The second day, they come back and learn about what they were curious about, and then they write nix at the label. So it really shows them that they can ask questions about their local history and get answers. So it's really a good opportunity for them to tailor their interest in history. The teachers design each of their visits, so every classroom's visit looks different. It's all curriculum-based and hands-on. It's just a great program. Last year, we expanded it, and we saw every third grade Lowell Area schools. So we had eleven classrooms spend twenty-two days in the museum, using us as their classroom. So it was really just fantastic. You may see us roaming around downtown periodically with big groups of kids, that's part of this program. We start out with preschoolers. One Monday a month, we have a Museum for Tots program, where we do arts and crafts with young kids, and just kind of get them comfortable in a unique setting, do a lot of different hands-on things. And it gives their parents a chance to look around at the exhibits while they're there. We did a summer camp out at Fallsburg Village for kids ages eight to fourteen, and they got to do a number of different hands-on pioneer activities, and use the village as their experience for the day. Last year, we spent a lot of time on exhibit work. We have a new exhibit opening this spring on the history of the Graham family, who built, Robert Graham built the building that the museum was in, and a number of other buildings in town, the North Country Trail Building across the street here, a couple other buildings. His son Ernest moved into that house when he was six, and went on to become a world-famous architect in Chicago. He helped build the World's Fair, he built Shun Aquarium, Field Museum, Science and Industry Museum. World-class, big buildings. He grew up right here in Lowell. So, yeah, it was a story we hadn't been telling. And so this new exhibit really gives us an opportunity to share that amazing story with everyone. We had our first class use this space, and it's just phenomenal. It's been a really good addition to the museum. So look for an exhibit opening coming this spring on that, or fine-tuning a couple things yet, that'll be coming. And then we work closely with Lowell Township and their new park to interpret. They have an interpretive center that looks at the portrayed out there, so we've got a lot of exhibit work that's gone into that building. And then we're doing a series of interpretive boards that match the ones that we did for the city here on Main Street in the Little Lot, to talk about other aspects of Lowell's history, so those, that's a four-year project that'll populate the trail system of the park.
If I may, is this gonna be open, like, any?
Yes, yeah, we're currently figuring out right now. We're gonna have some regular open hours this summer out there, and then we're also coordinating with the township for days when they have big events going on to have it open. And then it is open by request, so if you call Lowell Township and tell them you want to do something out there, we can arrange to have museum people there, too, so. We're kind of figuring out exactly how that's gonna work, but we're trying to maximize being open when there's a lot of people out there. Another project that got a lot of life this year was our oral history project. We started this back probably about fifteen, twenty years ago, and have been gathering oral histories of local community people over time. But we have a new volunteer group that's really energized this program. They've done a ton of oral histories in the past year. And then, they really wanted to be able to share those with as many people as possible. So they connected with our local radio station, ninety-two point three, and they're airing all of these oral histories Sunday nights at APM. So if you tune in, you'll get to hear local history from right here in Lowell. And then we're also upgrading our website, and we're gonna have all these oral histories posted there, so you don't click on a name and hear the oral history anytime that you'd like. So, we're really excited to get this information out there. They're on VHS tapes, and DVDs, and digital cameras, and everything, so we've kind of streamlined everything into one system that will all be available online now. In addition, we have our public programs. We do four public programs a year. We did one on women who were won this past year. We did a collaborative exhibit with Grand Valley on the impact of the Grand and Flat River on the development of Lowell. We did an Oakland Cemetery tour, and then we had the First Trade Cabin opening. That was part of the Pink Arrow Community Celebration. One of our favorite events is our Summer Fest fundraiser. It's a great night. We raise money for the museum, and people get to come and see the exhibits. And then we have local food and drinks from the local breweries and restaurants around town come in. We have someone different in each gallery, so we get to kind of showcase all that kind of stuff going on, and all of our people get to enjoy the museum setting. And then all our regular services, we preserve the history of Lowell and make it available for people in a multitude of ways to learn about our past. And I just want to thank you all for all of your continuing support and help in making the museum open and possible to our community and all of our visitors. I'm here to pay down your questions.
Is there anything that you think to explain the explosion of visitors and website visitors? I mean, is...
I think it's a combination of a lot of things. We've been really putting a concerted effort in over the past five years to get the history out of our walls and into people's hands, whether it's through the website. We put our collection online, people can search the whole collection online now through our website. We've had a lot of genealogical work that we've made available to people. And then we've expanded our programming, so people are coming in contact with museum people and events more frequently, so I think we're more in their minds. Beyond that, I don't know. I just think we're out there a lot, and people are interested in our history, and...
I see people reading the signs all over on the River Walk and around all the time.
It is, it's great. You know, today, we had a snow day at school. We had kids and their parents in the museum during the snow day, hanging out. I mean, that's great. That's wonderful to see, so, yeah, it's good. Our research room has just been busy. We're scrambling to keep up with everybody down there, so it's good.
And I know I just got in the mail my yearly subscription fees, and I think it's very affordable for a family and everything else for what you get out of the entertainment value.
Yeah, we try to keep it accessible to everyone. We have a number of free days every year, so that anybody can come in.
I have a question. I just think it's the coolest place in town, and if you haven't gone, you should go fifteen or twenty times. And it's really a museum that is all over this whole community, it's not just a building on the corner. So, I think it's great. I'm a huge fan. I think everybody should go all the time, and buy a membership.
Yes.
Whatever else you want to do. Leave a blank check, they'll take care of it. Anything else for Lisa?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did leave y'all a manual there, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck in that, Mike. Resolution six, non-union and department pensions, OPEB.
Actually, you received two resolutions by email this afternoon. One is Resolution oh-six dash twenty, and the other one is oh-eight dash twenty. Our current and future financial position has required me over the last three years to evaluate how we address future retirement costs going forward. It is apparent to me, if we continue to provide retirement and other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB, in the manner we do currently, this will not be sustainable for the future of the City of Lowell. This will impact how we provide municipal services and the quality of life in the community. I've spent much time in the past three years on these issues. But in the last year and a half, I've put forth an effort to plan what is being proposed in the future, while ensuring we are providing fair compensation and benefits for our employees and future employees that are in line with trends occurring throughout communities in Michigan. At our last city council meeting, the city council ratified a labor agreement with our police officers' union that has put us on a path towards addressing these future concerns. I'm asking the city council to approve Resolution oh-six dash twenty that will address future pension and other post-employment benefits with our non-union and department head staff. The resolution proposes the following for our non-union and our department heads. In regards to retirement health benefit, which is OPEB, the city will provide retiree health insurance coverage for employees retiring on or before June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, along with his or her spouse at the time of retirement, for no more than the first year, five years of retirement, or until said retiree and or spouse becomes eligible for Medicare. Whichever is earlier, provided the retiring employee has achieved one of the following: ten years of service by age sixty, fifteen years of service by age fifty-five, twenty-five years of service by age fifty-five. This is currently what we provide today for employees who meet those retirement marks. The city, for the remaining employees, the city will establish a retirement healthcare savings plan into which it will contribute two percent of their annual base wage per fiscal year for each remaining current employee. Such employees are not eligible for employer-provided retiree healthcare. C, employees hired after September sixth, two thousand sixteen, will not receive retiree healthcare or a contribution into a retiree healthcare savings plan. For retirement, employees hired on or after July one, twenty-twenty, will be enrolled in a defined contribution plan with immediate vesting, to which the employer contributes ten percent of base wage, with a minimum employee contribution of six percent of base wage. The terms of the proposed resolution align with future retirement and OPEB provisions in the Lowell Police Officers Association Labor Agreement that will begin on July first, twenty-twenty. The only light eye item that differs is that no hard retirement healthcare or retiree healthcare savings contributions will be provided to police officers hired after July one, twenty-twenty. The proposal for this in the resolution is to ensure that the city doesn't provide me or any non-union or department heads hired after the date I was hired on, any form of retirement healthcare. The city has hired two non-union or department head employees since my tenure began in September of twenty-sixteen. This is being approved by city council resolution, and it can be modified at any time if desired. I recommend the city council approve Resolution oh-six dash twenty and Resolution oh-eight dash twenty as presented. The Resolution oh-six is for the defined contribution pension, oh-eight is for the OPEB.
All right. Any questions for Mike on that? I know that a lot of work and thought and pain and suffering went into trying to help us with this.
Right, we've been working on this for about three years, and it is a lot of work, but we were headed down an unsustainable path.
Correct.
It wasn't easy to come up with this and get everyone to agree to it, and thanks for doing the work.
Yeah, but we still got some work ahead of us.
I'm feeling like we're looking at some light.
Well, it was gonna take us down.
Yeah.
I agree.
Definitely don't think it'll, you know, fix the problem tomorrow, but it'll definitely stop it from getting progressively worse till we can't get back out of Lowell.
And we're not gonna be on the endangered species list.
We're gonna talk about that in a minute.
Right.
Motion for Resolution six twenty.
Salute.
Support. Any other questions for Mike on that one? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent, Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweidel?
Yes.
All right. What's the second one, six dash?
Eight dash.
Eight dash twenty?
Yes.
Motion, that's the OPEB one?
Yes.
All right, vote for that motion.
I'm on a roll. Salute.
I'll support.
Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers is absent, Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweidel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
All right. Item C, Resolution seven twenty, MERS signatories, Lowell Light and Power, Steve.
Good evening. Including your packet, is there a resolution to establish authorized signatories for MERS contracts and service credit purchase approvals? It's numbered zero-seven dash twenty in your packet. The purpose of this resolution will allow for the streamlining of approved contracts, adoption agreements, service credit purchases, et cetera, to MERS. Currently, if the Light and Power Board and/or city council approve an agreement, MERS requires approved and signed board or council meeting minutes to move forward with implementing whatever was approved. So, when the Light and Power Board approves something in February, we need to wait till the minutes are approved in March and signed before MERS can move forward. The resolution in your packet would allow MERS to move forward with any approved items immediately with my or the general manager's signature. We'd still have to bring all normal adoptions, agreements, service credit purchases to the board and council. This would just allow us to implement those agreements directly after the meeting, instead of waiting a month for the signed copy of the board minutes. The Lowell Light and Power Board did approve and recommend that the council approve this item tonight. They made that recommendation at their meeting last Thursday.
All right. And questions for Steve on that one?
What's the fear of waiting the thirty days? What do you gain by the thirty-day, not waiting thirty days? Anything important?
Well, we gain thirty days. For example, let's say we're negotiating a union contract, and we decide to go to a DC plan for new hires. Well, if we want to hire someone, and we haven't given MERS the planned documents, it could mean, you know, a lag of five or six weeks before we can start the hiring search. And that's actually a real situation we could face here in the very near future.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Steve?
We still get to look at it.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, yes.
Agreed. Motion then for Resolution seven twenty.
I'll make that motion for a Resolution zero-six dash one.
I'll suck it.
Any other questions for Steve? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweidel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent.
Thanks, Steve. Item D, PA two oh two waiver link.
If you recall, when our audit was presented to us in January, you were informed the audited asset valuation of our pension system was fifty-eight percent funded at the end of last fiscal year. This accounting triggers our preliminary review as being under sixty percent funded for our pension under Public Act two oh two of two thousand seventeen. Under this act, we are required to file a corrective action plan to address this and get our pension system towards a path of becoming fully funded if it is determined we are under the sixty percent threshold. We received notification of our status by the Michigan Department of Treasury on January fifteen, two thousand twenty. The state of Michigan allows for the city to request a waiver of this preliminary review if we meet certain qualifications. This waiver must be filed with Treasury within forty-five days of being placed on notice by them. In our situation, I believe we'll be able to file and be granted a waiver at this time. While our audited valuation states we are at sixty-eight, or at fifty-eight percent, our actuarial valuation for MERS, which was issued last June, has us at sixty-three percent funded and projects next year for us to be at sixty percent with our current plan in place. In addition, our recently approved labor agreement with our police officers' union will have them agree going forward to bridge their future pension multiplier from two...
from two-point-five percent to two-point-oh percent on the condition all employees who are currently in our Division ten pension system, which is all city municipal employees, do the same. Furthermore, they have agreed to close the defined benefit pension plan to new hires after July one, twenty twenty, when all others in the Division ten pension system do the same. Prior action this evening, which you approved, will close the traditional defined benefit pension plan for all non-union and department head hires after July one, twenty twenty. If the Division ten pension system bridges their future pension multiplier from a two-point-five percent to a two-point-oh percent multiplier going forward, MERS is initially projected that we will go from our current sixty-three percent funded to sixty-eight percent if that happens. This accounts for closing the pension for new hires. The city is currently taking the necessary path to correct the situation on our own at this time. The waiver process requires a simple council action or a voice vote as part of the application process. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve to request a waiver of a preliminary review of underfunded status to the Michigan Department of Treasury in accordance with Public Act two oh two of two thousand seventeen. As I said, we're taking care of the things we need to, in my opinion. To have to go through this step with the state, I don't feel we need to because we are addressing it. We do have an issue in two years from now, possibly, when the rate of return on our investment from MERS goes from seven-point-seven-five percent to seven-point-three-five percent. That might put us close to that. It might even put us under it again. But I do think, but I do know that by bridging down, if we can get that to happen, that's a significant positive impact to the system.
And that's what this waiver is intended to do, correct? Is to get people to start moving forward. And we've already taken the steps to move forward.
Correct. Yeah. They basically want to make sure that cities that are in this state are actually working on a plan to do. There's no mandate at this time that requires the state come in and mess with your pensions. That could happen down the road. But right now, it at least requires the municipalities to plan for this and understand we're in a much better situation, even in our current state, than a lot of cities in the state. For example, I know the city of Ben Harbor is like twenty-seven percent funded. And there's a number of downriver communities that are in the thirty percent. So we're not that bad. How they're going to get out of those, and I believe even I own the road commissions in the forties, in the low forties. So we're not in that situation. But we need to resolve this issue and move on.
And how do we actually get to one-hundred percent invested? I mean, it'd be nice to have that and to raise it another thirty-two percent. That's quite a bit.
There's a number of things that have to happen, I think. One of them is the future benefit payout plays into that. The other issue, one of the big issues that happened is the two thousand eight stock market. At that time, the city was essentially at seventy-seven percent. And they also, but the stock market went down so much that even to this day, the MERS assets have not fully gained what they've lost since two thousand eight. So it's, that's part of it. One of the other things you've done, which a lot of places have done, is you no longer provide ECOLO. MERS doesn't allow that, didn't allow that once we were below eighty percent. A lot of communities got themselves, because basically it was an additional payout. Some pension systems, they call it a thirteenth check, that basically the investment that they get, they give them up. Basically, they call it a Christmas bonus. That was a situation that happened in the pension system I came from previously. We don't do any of that. So by not doing those things, it actually helps you. But it's going to take, it's going to take us, at a minimum, we're projected at eighteen, be one-hundred percent in, I believe, eighteen years. That said, will we be one-hundred percent? Maybe, maybe not. But we'll be a lot closer. There is another step to this because one of my concerns going forward is in those out years, the cash flow that's going to be meant to pay this. I'm looking at trying to maybe reduce the cash flow payments, maybe reset the thirty, because what happened was in two thousand eight, they used to have what was called rolling amortization for your unfunded liability. So basically, what happened was you, every year that the unfunded liability was there, you just passed it on to the next year for thirty years. It continued to roll. Well, what they did in two thousand eight is they stopped that, and they basically said, okay, whatever your unfunded is at this point, in thirty years, it needs to be corrected. First twelve, first eleven years that the city had, we really didn't do anything to address the problem. We are now. But one of the things that we can do, though, is MERS will, if we meet their criteria, they will allow a one-time reset of the amortization. Where my concern is, is in today's dollars, in twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine, our payments in today's dollars are a third of what our general fund takes in, just in pension allocation. So I'm working on trying, I think by us taking these steps, I think when we make that case to MERS, I think that'll help us. So hopefully, we can get ourselves onto a path of sustainability. Thanks.
So not just sitting idle, right? Not so it's important?
No, we're taking.
We're going in the right direction. It's just.
It's just going to take a lot.
It's not a sprint.
I was listening to an economic report. They're talking about the twenties, being the roaring twenties where investments are going to be high and time to do some things in net, the thirties are going to be kind of down.
All right.
He has something he wants to say. He's quite, he's the subject matter.
Yeah, from my perspective, I think this is a wise move by Mike and the council. You know, I just pulled our MERS valuation. Currently, MERS mandates that anyone with a defined benefit funds their normal cost of the plan plus the unfunded liability over a period of time. And Mike was talking about the amortization period. I looked it up. Right now, it's twenty-two years. So in theory, if every single assumption MERS made was correct for the next twenty-two years, every single one, the city would be one-hundred percent funded. Problem is, if you look at MERS's history, people live longer, retire sooner or later, maybe make more than they expected. And then they just have never been able to invest and get the return that they've expected. Now, Mike and I did get a report, I think last week, MERS did have a twenty nineteen annual return of roughly thirteen-point-three percent, which is higher than their seven-and-three-quarters, you know, assumed return. And I said to my board, it's great. I mean, the market was up twenty-five percent, though. So they lost half of what they could have if they had just invested in the simple index fund. But we could talk about that for an hour. So, you know, Jim, I think.
That may be your, like, Lowell Light and Power Board meetings.
Right, yes, yes. Longer than an hour, like three, four hours. But anyway, I think at least the annual return for twenty nineteen was higher than expected. So I would think, I don't know all that, that actual value of the funding level should be higher for our next report, I would think.
Thanks, Steve. Recommendation then to approve a waiver request of a preliminary review to the Department of Treasury.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Any other questions for Mike or Steve? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent, and Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All right. Boarding Commission reports.
Excuse me. Historical district, we asked for a hundred and we got fifty. So at least we have some to play with. There's a lot going on on Main Street. Speaking of that, the Chamber Annual Dinner is in a couple of days, and we're going to be recognizing several businesses that spent well over a million dollars apiece, making things better on Main Street. Come down.
I'll be in attendance.
Good.
Thanks, Cliff, Jim.
This coming Tuesday, the LCTV board will meet to discuss who put in for a request, and we'll see how that goes and who gets it on boards.
Right.
The Lowell Area Recreational Authority met last Wednesday. The railroad is still a thorn in our side, figuring out how to get the trail across that. So we're looking at Plan C and just still working on that, hoping to move forward. Parks and Recs met tonight. I missed the first half of the meeting. The second half was pretty much bored. I don't know, Dan, if there was something exciting in the first half that I missed.
We had a gentleman come in that works with, he's part of the Flat River Watershed Council. They had one of their founding members from the area pass away, and they want to put a memorial plaque down on the river just to the east of the existing boat launchers. Bench down there right now. They want to put it down there by that.
Are you thinking about putting the plaque right on the bench?
Nope, they're going to put a big rock down there.
Okay.
It's a little away. That's the scenic outlook down here by the fairgrounds? Yeah.
But Flat means the grid.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's been underwater for the last, probably, couple of weeks. I've been down there too. The gentleman drove down there just for the meetings and get there. Yeah, there's the bachelor, he just, that somebody didn't have something nice. They still have to talk to the person's widow to make sure that's what she wants to do. That's it for me. All right. Fire Authority of Last Monday. Right now, you guys have in front of you the workshop summary from our Loop Avenue session. The description of the board, some ideas and expectations, and then some suggested next steps. The first one is to delay the scheduled study until the board can select a new chair. We did select a new chair in that, or at our last meeting. It's Jessica Marks from Lowell Township. So we'll move forward with that. We're in the process of putting some ideas together for a new county truck. In a couple of years, we're going to get two-hundred-four thousand from the county, and then the municipalities fund the rest. There's a whole bid specification process that you have to go through to qualify for counting mine. I think that's it. Any questions, comments, concerns about any of the monthly reports? Mike, city manager, report.
Okay. First off, I want to, I do want to thank the Police Officers Association. They made some significant changes to their police, to their retirement and retiree health care contracts. And I'll be honest with you, I've been involved on both sides of the table for twenty years now with police contracts, and I've never seen this amount of significant changes made after one meeting and a couple of emails. That, to me, that shows me, and I was very, I was very thankful to them as well, appreciative of them, of the, they understand the issues the city's facing and that they're becoming, they're willing partners to help us move forward. And that needs to be recognized, and they need to be thanked for that. Because I'll be honest with you, my experience, I honestly thought we were going to be in a three-twelve arbitrations. Had I been a union steward in my former life, which I was, you very well can make that argument and probably have a pretty good shot with an arbitrator. But that being said, I do want to, I do appreciate, I do appreciate they're willing to come up with some thoughtful solutions to the problems we move forward. I did submit a grant on the city's behalf to LCTV for assistance for Ware Road in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Need sixty thousand dollars, Joe.
I bet there's going to be a lot of people asking for one-hundred-nine thousand.
I'm just telling you, we need sixty grand.
Only one fold.
So I did that as well. Also, I want to update you on the small urban program for Foreman Street. We did receive formal notification from MDOT that we received one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars to replace the street component of Foreman from Beach to Hudson. However, part of, the good news is, is eighty percent of the road costs were funded to replace Foreman after we do the water and sewer. The issue is going to be is with MDOT, we, because this is an MDOT project, this has to go through their formalized bidding process. Meaning, in order, our plan was to do this project in June and have it done before school started in the fall. That would actually require that we actually had to submit our original plans for grade inspection to the state by December third. We received notification from MDOT to be able to apply for this project December fifteenth. So what we sense is that we're going to have to do this project next year. However, eighty percent of the road costs, which would have been coming out of the sewer fund to fix this, we're getting as a result of this. And it may delay, it's going to delay the project a year, but at the end of the day, it's one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars that we didn't have. So I personally have no issue working through MDOT to try and to make sure that we're in line with what we need to do. One of the, one of the things that you will be seeing in next year's budget, I met with Steve Dockersloot and Ryan Teachworth and Dan last week. We are looking at converting all of the remaining mercury vapor street lights in the city. We are looking at converting all of those to LED. We will see a significant savings in our utility costs, which we believe will have paid for the purchase of the new lights in about four years. And to do all of the, to do all of the streets, it's only about ten thousand dollars. So to me, it's a no-brainer to do. And so we are going to be looking at doing that next year. We'll be seeing that in the budget.
Those last one are too, don't they?
Yeah.
Replacing them as much, so you save money on that end, too.
Exactly. We save money on the labor costs of having to replace them and all that. So that is something that will be coming.
I have one question in the, in the delay of the road. Have we received any bids for any of the work, like the sewer water or anything yet? So we don't have to worry about any increases in my way of the year, so we don't have.
Something I should mention before, something I forgot to mention. We have, we've done, we've approved the engineering bid. They're going to have to come back and actually make modifications because when they designed the project, they didn't take into account the MDOT standards. So that is going to increase some cost to the engineering. But we have not bid out any, we haven't, we're still in the middle of engineering the project.
And what Mike means about MDOT standards, it's not the standard so much as the procedures. MDOT has a few hoops we have to jump through in order to spend their money. I mean, like he says, we need to have things in well in advance. Then we have to go to meetings, and then prevailing wages, there's studies that need to be done. There's extra paperwork that is required by MDOT. So there is more work involved by our engineers to do this.
We wouldn't have had done if we just did the project our own.
Yeah, we opened the bids on this.
All right.
We opened the bids on this engineering work on the eleventh of December. Mike got the call on the fifteenth, hey, fly for this money. January, Grand Valley Metro Council says, yeah, that's a good thing to put in there. Sends it off to MDOT, and we found out, what, last week?
Thursday.
Hey, we got the money. So that is kind of what a monkey wrench into the whole thing. But again, because of their scheduling and everything and what we're doing and where we're working, the idea of waiting another year is, I think, more palpable for everybody for one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars than make a mess just because we can or to try to do it, follow it. Right now, I think if everything went really well, and it never does with the process, but if it did, we could maybe start it in October. Well, that's not the place to be in October.